Before we get started, I would like to take a moment to recognize and honor our veterans in the audience today and in our community. We would like to express our deepest gratitude to those who have served in the armed forces. Our veterans have made a tremendous sacrifice to protect our freedom and ensure that and ensure our safety. The courage, dedication, and service are the foundation upon which our nation stands. To all veterans, thank you. Thank you for your bravery, thank you for your commitment, and your unwavering sense of duty. You have made a lasting impact on our community and in our country. So if we have any veterans, veterans in the audience, would you please stand? We just had our Veterans Day parade, a lot of them are probably still in the process of getting back, but we did want to make that public and that we truly, truly appreciate our veterans. Our team at the city of Spartanburg makes up about eighteen, eighteen percent of our staff.
Twelve.
Twelve percent?
According to our Facebook today.
Twelve, I read the wrong one, twelve percent. I wanted to go up to eighteen. So, uh, thank you to all of you and happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. Uh, we're gonna have a moment of silence then we're gonna be led by the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I just happened to attend two funerals today. Uh, Mr. Charles Atchison was funeralized at eleven o'clock. Uh, Mr. Atchison was ninety-five years old, entrepreneurial businessman, just a great, great person, great person. And a personal friend of mine, Eric Chee, was funeralized, young man, forty-four years old. Uh, just a couple of hours ago. Just be with both of those families, think about both of those families as we stand for a moment of silence. And I do want to thank, um, Councilwoman Littlejohn's husband, Horace, as well as Councilwoman Sally's husband, um...
Roland.
Roland, Roland, Roland's gonna get me, for their service. And I know, uh, Councilman Rob, Councilman Rob, moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Pro Tim, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We can hear the voices, it really sound good today. Item three, approve of the minutes of the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting?
I saw most of that week's appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Eyes have it. Item four, approve of the agenda for the November the eleventh, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting?
Second. Second?
He will second automatically. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Eyes have it. Before we have our public comment, if you guys heard the pledge, you heard some nice voices going right along with us. So we're gonna ask, um, President, if you don't mind standing introducing the group? And, uh, we're gonna have a little people introduce themselves.
We are the Spartanburg Chapter of the United States. With us today, we have our Duke and Duchess. Can you guys please stand? And so these are ages three through five. So we are here visiting with you guys today. They had a chance to talk with the mayor prior to the meeting, they're just really enjoying. And accompanying, accompanying them, the Duchess, we have the moms of the Spartanburg Chapter. We have Mom Maya, Mom Vadi, Mom Verter, and Mom Sarah. So thank you guys for welcoming us, we appreciate you.
Thank you, now the little ones gonna introduce themselves?
They sure can.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, introduce your names before you do this.
My name is Boe Lee, Theodore, and I'm ten and three quarters old, I'm at Spartanburg High School, I'm fifth grade.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Prescott, I'm ten years old, I'm at Spartanburg High School.
Hi, my name is Genesis, and I'm eight, and I go to North Sea Board.
Hi guys, I'm Casey Jackson, I go to Wharton Elementary, I'm ten years old, actually.
I'm Amy Dachstein, and I go to Wharton Elementary, and I'm, I'm my age.
Hi, my name is Avadi, and I'm homeschool, and I'm eight years old, and my grade is...
Very good.
Awesome.
I'm Shyam, I'm ten, I go to North Charles.
Awesome.
I also want to introduce myself, my name is Malani Daniel, I am the team president for our Spartanburg Chapter chapters. I'm first off, usually with the Duchess, although it's very nice to introduce them today. And I attend Spartanburg High School.
In what, uh, office do you hold at Spartanburg High School?
Um, I am on our student council, in addition to being on a variety of other service posts there. But in our student council, I am one of our house of representatives.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, boys and girls. We have public comment, uh, at this time, and the way public comments work is that you have two minutes. Once you come up, uh, give us your name, your address, uh, your two minutes will start. And today, we have Dr. Russell Booker, that's coming to speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, thank you all for having me, um. And I also want to just say a quick word of thank you for the role you all played in helping, uh, the city launch Hello Family, uh, a couple of years ago. That pilot that you, um, embarked upon has led to a county-wide expansion of that program and significant investment followed. So you're taking that chance, uh, on the children and families in Spartanburg, it's paid off, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, your two minutes start now.
Okay, so hopefully, uh, I will have a chance to come back and give you an update on Hello Family, some of the data. It's very positive, um, and a, a grant that we're really excited that we've been able to receive to advance this work. But for today, I just want to come and simply share with you, uh, one of the projects that we've embarked upon at SAM, uh, in relation to Hello Family. Uh, you have at your place a book, um, that, uh, includes, uh, early bird. So for those of you who don't know the name of the bird that you see with Hello Family, that bird's name is Early. And as you, um, you know, read through the book, you're going to see many of the, uh, sights and sounds of our beloved city. So we would like for you to take that with you, um, share what's taking place. If you've got grandchildren, I think it's, it's a wonderful teaching book. I want to say a word of thank you to Jason Spencer, who many of you may not know that that is one of his talents. Jason, uh, was the author of this book, uh, he's also done some work with Annabelle the Giraffe. Don't know if you're familiar with that work, that's really played a big role with children across the state of South Carolina. And I also want to give a shout out to USC Upstate, you can see the illustrations were done through, uh, their, their studio. Some of you may not even be aware that there is such a studio where the students, uh, they are able to take part. As you look through the book, you're going to see some familiar faces, uh, some familiar names, and Megan can explain all of that to y'all. But just want to thank y'all and, and share this, uh, exciting news. We've got a book launch coming up in December, uh, we're also working with Hub City Books, and we're working with the Hospital Book House. Every child that's born in Spartanburg County will, uh, have an opportunity to take this book home. And who's the youngest over here?
Genesis? In Genesis? Okay.
I'll let y'all fight it out, so I'm gonna give them a book, and then thank y'all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Booker, we really do appreciate the work that you are doing over with SAM and, and beyond. Not just the city of Spartanburg, but the entire county of Spartanburg. Awesome book. You know, my, uh, name is inside the cloth, by the way. There's also a Spanish version that, that Megan, we have in Spanish. Thank you, sir. Uh, item six, approve of the twenty-twenty-five city council meeting calendar. Presenter is Ms. Christie, Lansing City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Looking at our calendar for next year, um, most of our meetings stay true to the second or fourth Monday of each month, except for two. Um, if you will look in January, on the twenty-eighth, the meeting, we had to move it to the twenty-eighth because, um, county council will be meeting in here on the twenty-seventh in January, so we moved it to the next day because we can't be at the same time. Um, and then the next one would be, of course, after the holiday in May, it would be on the twenty-seventh instead of the twenty-sixth. And then we only have one meeting in December.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the calendar for twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, ordinance. Ordinance to amend the city of Spartanburg, South Carolina zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Plan land use element B, amending section two oh six, changes the district boundaries. Specifically, a property located at seven seventy Howard Street, tax map number seven dash eleven, dash zero four, dash two zero six, dot zero one, which is, uh, zone R eight, with a land use designation, a general residential district to a, to be assigned, a zoning designation of DT four, with land use designation of downtown code district, and providing a, uh, servability and effective date. Damn, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and city council member, my name is Nanjo with the city planning department. So tonight, I will be presenting the seven seventy Howard Street resoning request. So there's, uh, this request is on behalf of the city and partnered with the Northside Development Group and the Homes of Hope. So both, uh, organizations have partnered with the city in the past to develop a variety of housing development throughout the city. So the goal of those projects to provide a mix of affordable rental and the homeownership units for sale in the north side, uh, neighborhood. For every resoning request, the staff and the planning commission are required to, um, analyze the five standards per the current zoning ordinance. They are consistency with the comprehensive plan, compatibility with the present zoning and the conforming uses of nearby property, and with the character of the neighborhood, um, suitability and the marketability of the property affected by this amendment. And lastly, the availability of, uh, utility in terms of sewer water and stormwater facilities. A little bit, um, project detail is the site is a two point seventy-seven acres of land and proposed to have twenty-one attached and detached, the single-family townhomes. So this picture shows the aerial photo for the seven seventy Howard Street bounded by the Fairgrounds Road and the west of Fremont Street. And this is the street view of the, uh, project site. This is the current zoning map, shows the yellow, um, or orange is the current zoning, uh, classification for R eight. And you can see it is surrounded by the DT three shown in green and the DT five showing, um, blue. So the reason behind this, uh, resoning request is the current zoning classification of R eight, general residential district, it does not accommodate and support the attached townhome development. So therefore, uh, reassigning the current, uh, reassigning the project from its current zoning R eight, uh, general res- general residential district to the proposed zoning of DT four downtown code, will accommodate and support the development of single-family, attached and detached townhomes on this site. So this is an example of townhome design, Pearl Place, uh, provided by Homes of Hope. And this is the built example of Pearl Place. And these are the homeownership, uh, uh, design examples also, uh, provided by, um, Homes of Hope. So after, um, thoughtful consideration and thorough analysis, staff recommends approval of this resoning request from R eight, general, general residential district to DT four downtown code, district for three reasons. The reason one is the proposed DT four zoning will be conforming to the existing land use pattern and the uses, and is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood uses. And, uh, also, the DT four zoning allows for smaller lot sizes and allows for the development of single-family attached and detached townhomes. And lastly, this new DT four zoning classification also provides staff an opportunity to review the urban design framework that supports the community character that's stated in the north side transformation plan. And that concludes my presentation, I will take any questions or comments that you may have for this project.
Mayor, um, go back to the picture of the, uh, actual, uh, lot. I want to make sure I, I, I got it right, uh, uh, it kind of confused me, asked exactly what we're talking about.
Do you mean this side?
No. See, this here and now, yeah, go back to the other, I'm sorry.
This one?
Is that the Franklin School, the building there? That's what I wanted to make sure, because the other, the next picture confused me. Okay, no.
And can you go back one more slide from there?
This one?
So, so it's surrounded by DT three and DT five?
Yes.
Is that what I heard you say? And the memo doesn't reference DT five, so...
Or is it DT four?
Huh?
Maybe it's DT four.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, I couldn't see from the, it looks to be DT four by the color.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's DT four, because the current zoning map, we ha- well, the old one we have, the color, the blue color is for DT five, but as we updated that and then the color shifted.
That's fine, I just wanted to clarify that, because I, yeah, so if it's surrounded by one or the other, that's, that's, that's...
Any other questions? I recommend a, uh, motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the zoning as, uh, recommended by the planning commission.
Oh, public, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we open a public hearing?
Second.
That's what I meant to say.
Thank you.
Uh, and so the way the pu- public hearing works, the public hearing is that we'll give, uh, both sides twenty minutes to, to speak, uh, if they are for this project, which is located at seven seventy Howard Street, or if you are against. And you have, we have twenty minutes to discuss that, no one person can take over ten. And, uh, so I will open it up, do we have anyone that wants to speak in favor of seven seventy Howard Street project? In favor, come on up. Give us your name, please, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council and Councilwoman Littlejohn, it's been a while since I've seen you. My name's Don Oglesby, I'm the CEO of Homes of Hope. Just wanted to introduce myself and kind of tell what we're gonna do there if we're, uh, our rezone request is approved and what our history of affordable housing has been. In twenty-six years, we've, um, developed seven hundred and three affordable homes, uh, to date. We've got thirty-eight of those homes that we've developed in Spartanburg, and we've really enjoyed working in Spartanburg. We've got plans to do even more if this is approved. Sometime in the next twelve to eighteen months, we plan to build eighty-eight more in Spartanburg, uh, which will put us, uh, well over a hundred that we will have developed in Spartanburg that's affordable for families earning thirty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. All the homes we build, will be three-bedroom, two-bath, there will be townhomes on this site that we're talking about tonight. We do a lot of single-family attached homes, I'm sorry, detached homes as well. Everything we build is new, everything we build is three-bedroom, two-bath. Uh, everything we build, hopefully, uh, is market quality. It's a, it's a principle of ours that it's, you, it should be indistinguishable from houses surrounding ours that are at market price. We don't want to stigmatize families to live in a home that's Homes of Hope develops, and they can point at it and say that must be a low-income family living there. We just don't want that. So we've always tried to build market quality that looks like it's just as expensive as the house across the street. We also, um, make sure that our neighborhoods that we develop are mixed income, so that we don't congregate or segregate people by income. There's a diversity of incomes from thirty percent AMI up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which is important to us. And the last thing that I'll share with you that we've done over the years, we always are intentional about trying to connect our families to resources for economic mobility. Affordable housing is a game changer. Uh, if you can, if you, if you've been paying sixty percent of your income for housing for years, this, the instability that happens with that, as I know all of you know, uh, is, is critical to change. And so thirty percent of your income for housing is a game changer, gives folks a chance to breathe, a chance to say, you know what, I, I can work on myself, my family, my economic situation. So we are all about connecting our families, once we're housed, once they're housed, with economic mobility resources. That could be partners in the area, that could be things that we connect them to. It's very important to us, we're not just putting Band-Aids on people forever, that there's generational change happening, that they don't one day need Homes of Hope anymore. So that's kind of who we are and what we're all about. And I hope that you've seen from some of the pictures tonight that there will be market quality. And we're excited about doing more in, in Spartanburg. I think we may just move to Spartanburg at some point, because we just really love working here. So I appreciate all of you that, uh, over the years have supported our work and happy to answer questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'll close my remarks.
Thank you, Don.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in favor, want to speak in favor of the project? Anyone wants to speak against the project at seven seventy Howard Street? Anyone wants to speak against the property at seven seventy Howard Street?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hear, um, public hearing is officially closed, do I, uh, hear a motion? Or any other questions, I'm sorry, any other question?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, um, adopt the zoning request change. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Eyes have it, thank you. The ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the transfer of scattered site properties located in the north side neighborhood. Mr. Martin Livingston, Community, uh, Development Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Uh, staff is requesting approval of an ordinance to approve the transfer of several scattered site lots for the development of north side townhomes phase two. Uh, in May of twenty twenty, city council approved an ordinance for the development agreement, uh, for the development of the townhomes. In twenty twenty-two, the design review board approved the, uh, final design and got those, uh, developed and ready to go. And so staff is requesting approval to transfer these lots to allow for the development to, uh, begin. And the developer is working with the Northside Development Group to provide a mix of affordable and affordable and market-rate housing, uh, in these units. These will be eighty rental units in the, uh, north side neighborhood.
Eighty?
Eighty. Eighty-two to be exact.
Do you know the breakdown right up there, Mark?
Breakdown of?
Wrong.
Uh, I don't, I think it's two bedrooms and three-bedroom units, there are two, three, and four stories, uh, with garages.
With garages. Any questions for Mr. Livingston? Alright, I recommend, um, do I hear a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the ordinance of authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for the transfer of scattered properties. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Eyes have it, Mr. Livingston, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff update from Mr. Story, and before we go there, and I didn't make mention early on, uh, Councilmember Rob Rain, again, we may mention that he, uh, is a veteran, uh, but he had some business that tied him up in another city. He was not able to get back today on time. And, uh, Councilwoman Erica Brown, uh, was married on this past, uh, Saturday, and we kind of expect that she wouldn't be here today. Mr. Story?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, a few, uh, staff updates tonight. Uh, I will start with, uh, the significant work that's going on to remove storm debris from Hurricane Helene. I wanted to, uh, share, uh, the, the progress that our team has made. Uh, to date, we have moved, uh, between city staff and contracted staff eighty-three thousand five hundred cubic yards of material. Uh, to put that in context a little bit, um, that is equal to a pickup truck load, uh, full for every twenty-three feet of city street. Think about if you were walking down the city street and you walked for twenty-three feet, that span would have produced at least a pickup truck, uh, throw. We have, the, the, another way to look at it is, um, we have produced about, we have moved about twenty-three dumpsters full for every mile of city street. And we haven't gotten to all of the city yet, so it gives you a sense of just how many, uh, um, how much work is, uh, uh, and how much material, uh, is to be moved. So, uh, the team is making good progress, uh, today, there were seven, uh, you know, we got, on average, about seven crews working seven twelve-hour shifts per week, and that will continue. Uh, we continue to prioritize, uh, based on operational efficiency and, and safety. Uh, so some of the low-traffic roads will by definition be last, to, you know, uh, to, to, to get attention in the process as we move. So, um, certainly welcome any questions that you might have about debris removal. We appreciate the patience and cooperation, um, uh, the community has shown about that, but it's a substantial volume, unprecedented amount of material.
Chris, can, can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
I'm getting calls from the people on the low-volume streets who have been told now in two meetings that they're the lowest priority, um, and they're beginning to feel that. What can I tell them other than thank you for your patience, which is not going over well anymore? What, do we have any sort of timeline, any, anything I can give?
We have, geographically, we have, we have touched about half of the, the city, um, and, uh, so that gives you one frame of reference, um, you know, we're approximately six weeks from the storm, uh, uh, and, uh, you know, of course, there is, we're gonna make multiple passes, um, and, uh, we are, are reluctant to produce, uh, area-by-area schedules because while we know how much material we can move in a typical day, uh... because while we know how much material we can move in a typical day, the geography that covers varies heavily. There are some locations that you all have seen where a crew can work a full day and move 100 yards because of just the amount of material that is there. So, we are working as fast as possible. There is no budgetary limitation limiting this work. The only thing limiting this work is the amount of equipment and manpower we can contract for. And that is constrained only by the fact that there's large swaths of the southeast doing the same activity. And so, we're just, we do ask for folks' patience, but there is a substantial amount of progress.
Does that mean that half of the city's streets have not been touched at all?
Approximately half of the geography of the city, and that's not an exact amount.
We still have five untouched. It's just half of the debris hasn't been picked up.
We have five contracted, still, the five contractors that are loading the double trucks.
That's correct. And, you know, just another frame of reference, there are about 12,000 residential parcels in the city limits. And if we take what we moved, have moved to date and divided it by those 12,000 parcels, it'd be about three full pickup trucks per parcel. So, if you think about that, that's a staggering amount of material, and that number will continue to grow and grows daily. So, it's a huge operation. We do ask folks to help us as best they can segregate the large debris from the typical green waste, leaves, and that kind of thing. Because that work continues. Our green waste team is getting that kind of stuff with the equipment that they have that's for leaves and other things. And we're continuing to try to figure out ways to accelerate it. We know folks are anxious to see it gone. We do encourage folks to recognize that there will be multiple passes and that there is a tremendous volume happening. We update the webpage about every 48 hours with the latest totals and progress.
Chris, do you have any other comparisons to describe how much debris has been picked up?
Besides the pickup trucks?
I do have three quick questions. One, you know, I think you alluded to it. You still feel like you have all the resources you need to get the job done? There's nothing we're leaving on the table in terms of, you know, available additional contractors or anything else that could speed this up?
We are, we are, we are not, it's not a financial constraint. It's only a constraint with the amount of folks we can bring in from outside of our team to move on that. And of course, we're, you know, in this same region, you have multiple entities because we also have SCDOT doing their right-ofways. So, you have multiple entities and a large swath of the South contracting for the same services. And it's just, with the two hurricanes, it's more in volume than the southeast has encountered, so.
And I've mentioned it to Kevin, but some of these lower volumes, I mean, lower-traffic streets that are lower priorities, you know, some of them are very invasive into the right-ofway. I mean, and we've talked about possibly flagging some of those debris piles just from a safety standpoint.
And we do have separate teams out dealing with some of those acute safety issues. And so, we do ask that folks, when there is a traffic safety issue, to, we are aware of many, but it's certainly not a bad thing to use the city's app or website to communicate about an area of particular concern.
Okay. And then, my last question is around the cabling that's on the grounds and power lines and cable lines. I mean, they're all, they're still on our sidewalks and, you know, really high traffic, like all the way down Main Street, you know, you see them. What's, what can we do to encourage our utility partners to address those, particularly the ones that are just, you know?
Most of what remains there is telecommunications infrastructure. Duke, on the power side, has addressed, you know, of course, all the city is back up with electricity. And so, some of those telecommunications issues, we are in daily communication with those folks about priorities and needs and ensuring that they are aware. There's been some consolidation over the decades in telecommunications, so sometimes there's confusion about whose line is whose, and we've been sorting those out.
Chris, on that same note, I had gotten a notification that FEMA will be here until 11:15 a.m. Will the contracted crew for the debris leave at that same time, or they will remain?
No, ma'am. They are contracted to stay with us until the job is done.
Okay. Fantastic. Just for clarity, Chris, is the city going on personal property, removing fallen trees?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think they were. However, because someone has been told that the city is going on to personal property, removing fallen trees, and I noticed that they did do it on one, and I think that that was the confusion there. You know, because the person saw them do it on one, where they automatically assumed that they were going to do it on others. But I think that the reason that they went on that personal property is because the trees were hanging over into the street. So, they had to go on and remove that. I think that was the reason for that.
And I'm not familiar with that specific situation, but what you've said makes sense in that we're, you know, what we're trying to deal with is the public right-ofway and eliminating any safety risks in the public right-ofway.
Chris, you said that our regular green waste crew is operating. Are they on their regular schedule that we have posted? Or is that disrupted as well?
Oh, it is, you know, they're working through and around all of the other debris. I believe on our green waste page, we update which neighborhoods, and they will go through a rotation. And so, that's where to find out which neighborhoods are up next for that function.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm wondering if...
Yeah, they're not, I can't update because they're not doing it on the street.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Chris?
All right. I wanted to also provide an update on the Morgan Square project. The committee that you all appointed to develop the design for the enhancements and improvements to Morgan Square met again last week and reviewed, you know, we had conceptual design approval, and then it's been into the full engineering and costing and the detailed work that takes it from that point to an actionable, contractable project. And so, we shared that with the committee last week, and it was well-received. The vertical construction aspects will be reviewed by the Design Review Board. There's, at their next meeting on the 18th, I believe it is, of this month, we'll be meeting with businesses on the square to go through that. And so, at one of your next coming meetings, the next several meetings, we'll have a full detailed breakdown of that project for you, including the financing plan and the updated details of that. I just wanted you to be aware that that's advancing and there's more dialogue about the specifics of that.
And at your meeting with the relevant residents of the square businesses and others, are you going through a timeline of installation and how the disruptions will be affected and then hopefully mitigated?
Right. We don't yet have a final schedule because we're going through the development of the guaranteed maximum price, which in some of the mobilization issues and timing of that might affect that. But we are very close to that, and we'll have, we believe it's about a 10-month process to get the full square back open. But the impacted, like outdoor dining areas and things of that nature, can be a shorter timeframe because they can be done in sections, brought back online in sections. So, we'd be going through those scenarios with the businesses on the square.
So, let me understand, the committee that is, that we appointed to look at Daniel Morgan Square has approved the actual
Yes.
design. It's just now we're doing the financial.
Yes, ma'am. The buck, we'll stop with you all on the contracting for it. That, and the final approval. So, that's what's coming your way soon.
Chris, and another question, or maybe just a statement I think it's fair to make. And we had this conversation earlier this week. But as we, as a city, prepare for an administration change in the next months, there's been talk even today about continuing to possibly deputize our law enforcement in punitive ways against our own residents. I just ask that you keep us as informed as possible on anything that you're hearing about taking fluoride out of our water system, anything like that, that have been campaign promises, so that we aren't wasting time being reactive, but that we can be proactive in upholding our values and the safety of our residents as much as possible.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as we give out council updates, council members, would you please give your name for our students that are visiting with us this evening and which district you represent? And just a brief, brief description of your area, just so someone may be familiar with where each and every one of us represent.
Okay. All right. Hey, everybody. I'm so glad that y'all are with us today. My name is Megan Smith. I represent the west side of the town. So, have any of you ever been to the mall before? Yes, have you ever been to Walmart? Yeah. So, that's the area that I represent. And we have Woodland Heights Elementary School and Jesse Bobo Elementary School in our, in my district. So, very glad to have you guys here with us. Want to congratulate Erica. We were all there at her wedding this weekend. It was a beautiful time after a stressful week to see their commitment to each other and our community's commitment to them. So, I know we all congratulate her. Thank you to all the veterans in the room and to Rob for his service. Hearing, I always enjoy his comments on this council meeting, so I miss that. And as we think about what all lies ahead, the reason I am up here in this seat is because I was frustrated after a national election, and I had lots of feelings, and I didn't know what to do with them. And if you know my story, you know that two people in this room, named Christopher, encouraged folks to channel those feelings, whatever they might be, into the local level, where we can actually see results, where we can be a part of the solution, where we don't other our neighbors, but we see them as friends. And so, whatever your feelings might be this week and coming up, I encourage you, encourage all of you to get involved now. Don't wait till you're an adult. You're here, you're doing it, and that's awesome. So, we can, we can keep Spartanburg the place that we love, and we need all of you to help us do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I read your post too today, so.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jamie Fulmer, and I represent District Four. And so, that's like a lot of the east-side neighborhoods, like Converse Heights and Andrews Farm and a lot of the Duncan Park area, Lakes at Canaan out near E.P. Todd. So, in addition to E.P. Todd, there's Pine Street School that's in our district. And so, it's a great honor to serve not only everybody in the district, but also particularly the young folks in our district who represent the future of our district and our city. Mr. Mayor, we began, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think it's especially important, not just because the Jack and Jill group is there, but because it's the first one since an election, and also because it's on Veterans Day. And it reminds us of the service and sacrifice of so many in defense of the freedoms that we enjoy as a country. And so, you know, elections come and go, but the principles associated with the United States will persevere no matter what happens in an election. So, I want to thank Rob and others in our, on our city team and throughout our city who gave their service to our country and in many cases, their lives. And I hope that everyone has had a good day, especially those who served. Also, want to echo the comments about Erica, congratulating her. It was a wonderful wedding, and everybody had fun. May have even seen some folks dance a little bit. I won't name names, but Chris Story. No, no. But, yeah. So, also had the opportunity to come down to the Kindness Day event yesterday. And that was, as I said last meeting, appropriate on the heels of an election. But it was a nice event despite a little chill in the air and a little rain that came later in the day. So, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Team for putting that together.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Councilwoman Littlejohn?
Hi. My name is Jessie Ruth Littlejohn, and I serve City Council District Three, which is mostly the south side of town. However, it covers Hampton Heights and Forest Park, the South Converse Neighborhood Association, Maxwell Hills, and part of Duncan Park. So, I cover a great deal of the south side of town. And I look out at you all out there, and I have to go back, I should say this. I look at you, beautiful children, and I am thinking to myself, one of these days, one of you are probably going to serve as my president, or you might serve as my governor or my senator. I see you doing great things because you are smart children, and you look like you want to go someplace. And I would be in your corner rooting for you, whatever you want to do. Just look me up. Don't ask me for any money. Look me up, though, because you are looking great. I do want to say that I have attended four funerals in two weeks' time of friends, dear friends. And I attended one today of Charles Atkinson. And then, Sunday, Nadine. No, Saturday it was. Nadine on Saturday. And then, two weeks ago, Cassandra Gray and Jeanne Speaks. So, it's just so many sad moments as well as good things that are taking place. And I do want to thank the city for the things that they are doing. I know that there is a great bit of work that needs to be done as far as all of this debris that is on the street. But I have witnessed this crew, or these crews, out late into the evenings, working. And I am very appreciative of all of the things that you're doing because I know that you are being taken away from your families, because I appreciate that. And I think that's all, Mayor. I think that's all. Thank you.
And, you know, you say way into the evenings, but even on the weekend, they were working yesterday. You know, when I was coming home from church.
Yes.
They're out there really trying. Thank you for your comments. April Ten?
Good evening. My name is Janie Cleckley Sally, and I represent District Number Five. And like Megan, have any of you been to the Beacon? All right. How about the airport? Great. Well, those are some of the fixtures in my district. My district is like a puzzle, so it kind of runs from downtown at the AC Hotel at the railroad track to part of her district. railroad track to part of her district, which is Pine View Neighborhood and North and South Park Hills, Highland Home. So it's, it's a wacky, wacky kind of district, but it's a wonderful district, and I'm enjoying the work in the district. I want to say to the Jack and Jills, thank you for bringing out the Dukes and Duchess. They are beautiful children, smart children, and I appreciate them saying the Pledge of Allegiance with so much vigor and pep. So it made us sound like we didn't know what we were doing. And again, to the sadness of, of the passing of lovable Charles Atkinson, who was dear to my heart and a member of my church, and he's going to be truly missed. I want to thank all the veterans that are serving, all the veterans, which include Mr. Littlejohn, Rob Rain, and my husband Roland Sally. If it wasn't for them, where would we be? So and to each and everyone who's here tonight, thank you for coming. Thank you for the work that the staff of Spartanburg City is doing for us and continue to do for us, and I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you. And go ahead, Councilwoman.
I forgot to mention, there's a student there who's a member of Mount Moriah. Which one is it that is a member of Mount Moriah?
Genesis left. Genesis left. It was Genesis. I was gonna make mention, but she did leave out.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but she is a member of your church.
Yes, yes.
She let that be known. Thank you again to the Jack and Jill, Dukes and Duchess for coming out. And, and one thing, yes, I'm, I'm a, I just, things catch my eye. For, for one, help me again, young man, to the, what's your name again? Theo. Them socks, man, I love them. I love your socks. Pull your pants leg up. Love those socks. And then, I'm a bowtie guy. When I wear a tie, I wear a bowtie. So I, I really appreciate you guys sitting there with your notebooks and your legs crossed. Ruth, you hit it on the head. One day, future presidents, presidents of corporations and, and all, that's just awesome to see. I, again, as I made mention earlier about the passing of Mr. Atkinson, you know, lifelong just mentor to a lot, plenty of people, as well as a legend in Spartanburg community, and also a good friend of mine, Eric Cheek. Just, just continue to keep them in prayer. Megan, I do appreciate your post today. I don't know, I don't know when you posted it, but I just happened to read it, and it was at the right time for me. It was just at the right time for me. I don't know if it's anything that was that special, but it was just at the right time for me. One thing I, I always try to keep up with is the baseball. I had a meeting, had coffee with Tyson Jeffries last week, I think it was, and, man, if you, you see what's coming for, for you guys, you, you see what's coming downtown. It's pretty leveled off, that you can see the field, you can see the baseball diamond now. Now they have the parking deck going up beside it. Every time I sit and talk to Tyson, I always remind him about every city I go to now, I look for the baseballs, if they have a baseball affiliate or a minor league team, I like to go see the stadium. Tyson has assured me, Mayor Rice, we can compete with anybody, but he said that we're gonna have one of the best stadiums around, truly on the southeast. I went to Las Vegas this summer, he said, well, we can't compete with Las Vegas, and I kind of understand that. Any other? Martin, all the, all the stuff on the north side, on Weldon Street. Man, I grew up on Weldon Street, so I'm looking forward to seeing what's going there. Thank you for what you're doing in the, the works there. Kindness Day rained on us. Jamie and I got there late, and of course, Jamie's gonna bring the rain, so, you know, we had to, we had to cut it short. And thank you to the crews that are out there working, again, all the crews that are out there trying to get us back to normalcy. We really do appreciate it. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Just be blessed. We do appreciate you, and we are here for you and, and the best interest of Spartanburg. Hello, family. Jason, thank you, buddy. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the book.
Congratulations.
It's going to my grandson. Going to my grandson. I have five granddaughters, but I'm getting this to my grandson.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and move in the executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.